Check one, check two. We ready to roll? Alright, so. Sounds good. Alright, welcome everybody. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. This is the Monday, September 16th, regular meeting of the Edina School Board. First, I would ask for the superintendent to quickly run through the agenda, and once he does that, I'm gonna change the order of the agenda.
Okay, so we'll approve the minutes. We have several items on consent, some personnel agreements, student support services agreements, election judges, and the board committees. I believe that's one thing you're gonna change. We have a technology update, just to give the board, the community update of what we're doing in technology. So Steve has brought staff and experts here to talk about how technology is impacting student learning. The policy committee worked on 606, so we're bringing that as a discussion. And then, under action, it is a finance show around obligation bonds, long-term facilities maintenance, and certifying the levy. And the board will approve a proposed strategic plan draft that will be used for community discussions over the next couple of months. So that is what is on the agenda for tonight.
Alright, so we have a presentation, but not all the presenters are here. So I would like a motion to change the agenda as follows. To move presentation after hearing from members of the audience, and also, I would like to move leadership update up to after consent. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor of the changes in the agenda I just recommended, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we're on to approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the August 12th work session, August 12th regular meeting, August 13th work session, August 26th special enclosed meeting, and then September 9th special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes to the minutes? Alright, all those in favor of approving the work sessions and regular meetings and special sessions that I just listed, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Alright, now, we are on to hearing from members of the audience. We do have, at seven o'clock, hearing from members of the audience. I would request that, I have four speakers tonight. Please keep your presentation to three minutes. Do not make any comments about individual members, whether they're employees, board members, or community members. If you have a concern about any of the above, just bring it to the attention of the superintendent. And with that, I'm going to call Heather Teetz. Welcome.
Hi, Heather Teetz, mother of a Valley View 6th grader and high school 9th grader. And this is kind of a continuation of last month. If you wanna watch it, it was minute eight, 20 seconds last month. But we were talking about, we had spent an hour and 45 minutes talking about pre-AP 10, and we were talking about the fact that pre-AP English 10. And we were talking about we had not done anything about how we were doing on the AP test and that evaluation. Okay? And I presented some data, the basics of which was in the June 6th, 2018 board packet, if people wanted to do that. That was 2012 through 2017 data. And where we talked about that in 2012, we had about 166 students take the test. And in order to get credit in college, you have to get a 3, 4, or 5. And we had about 90% of the kids who took the test get a 3, 4, or 5 in that year. Then we did the trial of personalized learning. And one of the things we did is we removed the honors classes in 9 and 10. We put everyone in one class. And we were, so we should, one of the things I think we should evaluate of how well that's going is how we're doing on the AP test, right, since it's called pre-AP. So we had this data, I showed it last time, between 2012 and 2017. And I asked last time for the administration to show data between 2009 and 2019, okay? The board member mentioned that the board had data, and the board did share that with me. So I thank you. And so what we were just saying is, 2012, we had 166 students take it. We had a drop-off in taking it down to 117 the next year. We had gone back up in 2017 to 200, no, 162. But then, this is new data. We went down to 128 in 2019 and 102 in 2019. So, and also a percent 3, 4, and 5. In 2017, we had 78% of the kids get a 3, 4, or 5. In 2018, it was 85, and in 2019, it was 84%, okay? So what we're saying here, if you remember what that big push was in our trial of personalized learning, was to put everyone in one class, have everyone have one content, and we were gonna have way more kids take the AP. We were gonna, that's our big push, right? Everyone should take it, everyone should take AP. Well, we're not having more kids take it. And then the open question is, you know, how well are we doing? How well are we prepared, right? And I said, we couldn't, we would want more data back behind. This could be a one-year of data probably wasn't good enough. So I had asked at that board meeting, when I followed up this path a week ago, to see if that data was going to be shared in the agenda packet as per my request. I was told to enter a data request at edinaschools.org, which I did. And the response came back around noon today, that the administration does not hold 2008 through 2011 data and could not share that. So, that's very surprising to me, that we don't have that data and available. So I bet the college board does. So this is my request of every member of the board. That you ask the administration to request that data of the college board, so that we can get the number of tests taken 2008 through 2019 of English Language Arts and English Literature APs, and the number of, they got 3, 4, or 5 for each of those years on both of those tests. And then we can do a good comparison, and we can evaluate data and say, did this change? Do what we wanted to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Hormata. Welcome.
You will see why I never come up and speak, so. I'm Sarah Hormata. I'm a graduate of Edina Schools. I have two sons who have graduated from Edina Schools. One is teaching in Mississippi, and the other is in college in Morehead, and doing very well. So quite different than when I came and spoke to you a few years ago. Sorry. "A goal without a plan is just a wish." Those were the words from Dr. James Rikaba when he spoke at the South, at Southview on personalized learning, June 9th of 2016. At last week's work session, the concept of addressing the needs of high-functioning students resulted in the threat of ending Edina's dyslexia program. To be clear, Edina doesn't have a dyslexia program. We have administrators busking at garden parties. There's no guarantee that the money raised will go to support students with dyslexia or any other reading needs. There's no written plan, no documentation, no official goals, just a wish. At tonight's work session, dyslexia was again raised as the trade-off for providing honors classes. Over the years, I've been told several times by school board members and PTO presidents that students with dyslexia don't belong in public schools. We must stop pitting one group of students against another. They are all Edina students. My request is that we identify and address the needs of all students. They are sitting in our schools seven hours a day. Could we please collect some worthwhile data and address the needs of the students? Honor students and students with dyslexia, or any kind of reading issue, whether they're diagnosed with dyslexia or not. They're not mutually exclusive sets. MCA tests are not enough data to guide all academic decisions. There are students who are proficient on multiple-choice MCA tests but are functionally illiterate. We need to identify their needs and serve their needs. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Alenny Glaram. Welcome.
Is this, okay. Hi, my name is Alenny Glaram, and I am the mother of a recent Edina High School graduate who attends Tulane University and a junior at the high school. I'm here to talk to the board this evening about advanced learning in our district. First, I am a member of the Parent Leadership Council, and as such, I was able to participate in a review and a discussion of our new strategic plan that the school board has put forward. I have to tell you that I was really struck by the tone of it. It indicates that as a board, you are more concerned about the education of advanced learners in our district than the education of all other students. In fact, the plan specifically states, and I quote, "Be the district of choice for advanced learners." Do we want this? Do we want to be the district of choice for advanced learners? Absolutely. It's critical for our success. But I believe that we should be the district of choice for every student in Edina, regardless of ability. Why, as a board, have you chosen to target a specific group only? Second, my understanding is that some on the board are trying to advance a policy that mandates certain honors classes across our secondary schools. And I have come to ask you what the motivation is behind this policy. As the mother of two advanced learners, there have been many opportunities for rigor available to my daughters, particularly in high school. In fact, I believe we have more students electing to take AP classes than most other schools in the state. Both my daughters have taken many of these AP classes with great success, but I actually wanted to highlight a different class, pre-AP English 9. One of my daughters has participated in gifted education since elementary school, and she still maintains that pre-AP English 9 has been one of her more challenging classes to date at Edina High School. Her teacher, Ms. Meinrich, is exceptional and created a classroom environment of rigor, collaboration, and personal growth for almost all of her students. In my opinion, this class does meet the needs of many advanced learners. So why are you proposing or suggesting that this class does not? Additionally, our district MAP data reflects that we have the highest growth for our most advanced students. I believe our biggest opportunity for growth is across the spectrum, including our middle and low-level learner, learners. Yet, where is the discussion and concern about these students? Finally, it is my understanding that the new policy, which is currently being discussed, would mandate separate honors classes for core subjects in our secondary education, written by board members without the input of administrators or educators in our district. Quite frankly, I find this incredibly alarming, and quite frankly, a misuse of your position as board members. None of you, other than Amir, are educators. None of you are experts in curriculum. None of you are experts in educating gifted and talented or advanced learners. We must involve our teachers and administrators before we put forth policies such as the one proposed. I believe our district can absolutely create a plan that meets the needs of all our students when we have open communication and collaboration district-wide. In summary, I believe that we need more information before voting to implement a plan that I believe to be biased. I appreciate your time and consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tracy Mercado. Welcome.
Hi. Kinda going off the cuff tonight, so. My name's Tracy Mercado. I have a 6th grader at Southview and a 9th grader at the high school, both of which have received gifted services in the elementary and middle and high school. I'm here because I, as a parent, as a community member, I just attended the work session prior to this, and I'm very disappointed. I'm disappointed that board members would use side meetings to create a policy to force a discussion versus collaborating with each other and asking for a discussion and working together. This policy is policy 601. It was crafted in the policy committee without any discussion or sharing of that information with our teaching and learning committee. It is a policy that is mandating honors and regular courses for all core courses in secondary schools, so middle and high school. Which at this point, we have about 75% of that already being offered, just to clarify for folks. I don't necessarily disagree with the recommendation. I disagree with the approach. I disagree with the lack of looking at cost, feasibility, and opportunity cost. Where I'm concerned is when we start making decisions in a silo, when we start looking at one-offs for target populations and not including other populations, you will have unintended consequences. This is budgeting 101, strategic planning and budgeting. You look at the total picture when you make these kinds of decisions. What about, so we talk about advanced learners. We've talked about the gifted study. We hear a lot about that group here. What about our middle learners? Was there a study for them? Is there a task force for them? What about our non-proficient learners? Literally, we have 30% or so, plus or minus, non-proficient learners. Where's the discussion? Where are the goals? Where are the resources for that group? Again, I have kids who happen to benefit from the one end of the spectrum, but I think that as a district, we need to be responsible for all students. And by mandating 11 courses, new courses or modifications of courses, there is a cost. And as Matt said in the work session, that cost will come at the expense of something else. So my question to you is, what are you gonna give up? What are you going to give up? Who will be affected? And what information are you basing that on? Finally, I guess, sorry, I'm just improvising here. My concern is that not one teacher was consulted in this policy draft. I just came from the League of Women Voters Forum earlier in the week, or last week, where almost every single candidate talked about the importance of including teachers, who are the experts in instructional curriculum and teaching and learning, but they talked about teachers, getting teacher input, getting teacher feedback. Why wasn't a single teacher included in this discussion? Why was this a side meeting to force a conversation? Because that is what we were just told it was in the previous meeting. So I'm disappointed. I think we can meet the needs of all learners. I think we can work together. But right now, we look like we're operating in a vacuum, and that's not a way to make progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have presentation from Edina Ed Fund. Welcome. You're back again, Regina. Different group this time.
This is a different group. I know, this is a fabulous opportunity. But Superintendent Schultz and Chair Wallen Friedman, members of the board, thank you so much for having us here this evening. I'm here as the Chair of the Edina Education Fund, and I'd like to introduce my colleagues here with me. We have Arthur Graham, who is an Edina High School student and a member of our student board, Kathy Rendleman, our Executive Director, Sue Carlson, who's a member of the administrative team for the Edina Education Fund. So thanks so much for having us this evening. We would like to just share with you and the community a brief update about the Ed Fund. Our mission has been the same for many years. We raise funds to support the educational needs and opportunities for all Edina Public Schools students. This year, we have the opportunity to celebrate our 25th anniversary. For 25 years, the Ed Fund's mission has aligned specifically with the mission of Edina Public Schools. That's to support every student at every site. We try to maintain the core of excellence for education, and it's the opportunity for our community members to provide funding to enhance our education in the classroom at every site. This year, we're gonna grow our partnerships. We're grateful to be able to have the partnership of the district, the support of our superintendent, our outstanding lead team, our educators, our parents and community. We also work in partnership with the PTOs and PTAs and organizations such as Edina Give and Go, who make a difference for our students every day. We're also planning to increase our donor base this year. Our donor base has represented approximately 9% of the Edina Public Schools community. We can do better. I'm gonna invite Kathy Rendleman to share a little bit of information about how we can make that difference.
So we're excited because 9% is, should be, an easy number to build off of. And the truth of the matter is, we're not looking for the Edina Education Fund to come through with five huge donors to carry us for the next five years. What we're looking for is that every community member makes a difference with their contribution. And for some community members, it will be one price, and for others, it'll be a different donation. But just if you think about it for a moment, if every family, not every student, but every family in Edina Public Schools gave $80, we would blow away our budget for the year. We also went to our staff this year and got outstanding support from Edina Public School staff and asked for $2 pre-tax out of every paycheck. And those numbers came in at this last paycheck, which is outstanding. So thank you for your support in that as well.
So we're inviting the community to join us and donate to the Ed Fund. We're going to support all of our kids. There are four primary categories in which we make this difference: literacy, STEAM, mental health and wellness, and professional development. Arthur, if I could ask you to just say a couple of words as a student representative. You've spoken extremely well about how the Ed Fund is important to the community and how it's made a difference. So I'm gonna invite you to just share a few of those words.
First off, I'd like to say hello, everyone. So I am truly grateful to be this year's, one of the student board members partnering with Edina Ed Fund. The Ed Fund has played an integral role in our school these past few years. The integration of our Writing Center and Math Room, I'm a big fan of, because that actually gives every student an opportunity to succeed by, you know, working out with their peers too. So maybe not that same level of relationship that you can develop with a teacher. You can get a student perspective, and that might be a little more helpful. Additionally, we've had a lot more, um, uh, sorry, lost words. We've had a lot more publicity these past couple of years with the Ed Fund. And I also have benefited in my own personal life from a nonprofit, Edina, a Better Chance Program. So I was really interested in giving it a shot and giving back to my community, so.
Thank you, Arthur. So the Cake Off is our major fundraising opportunity to support kids and make donations. Maybe we can do a little musical chairs? You wanna talk about the Cake Off? We'll go back again. We'll keep it interesting.
Our Cake Off is coming up. If you haven't joined us before, it's a fantastic event. It's a great place to go and learn a little bit more about the Edina Education Fund, to hear a district update from Dr. Schultz, and to hear really where our direction is going for the year. It's a light morning. You can come on your way to work at 7:30 if you work during the day, stop by for coffee and hear from one of our high school teachers about how they have benefited with the grant from the Ed Fund. Or you can come for our 10 o'clock brunch, which is the main event, including a live auction of some cakes that have been donated from local bakeries to help raise some money for our schools. We're also incorporating a Cake Off Home Edition this year, where people can bake at home and enter their own cake into the contest as well, which should be very exciting. And we can't wait for it to happen. This is one of our biggest events of the year that we bring everyone together and show them what we can do as a community.
So, thank you for your support. Thank you for your time to have us present this evening. And we'll pause here and invite any questions or comments you may have.
I have a quick question. Thank you guys for coming in. So sometimes I hear people say that I've given to other groups, like Edina Give and Go and Edina Ed Fund's great, but what are the differences? Or what does Edina Ed Fund really do? So I think just getting that out there would be awesome while we have this on camera with like 24 viewers at home and everybody else.
We're all over that. That is a great question. Arthur, I'm gonna, I'm gonna invite Arthur to address that first, and then Kathy can add some more information. Great question.
So I'm actually a student board member for both, so I can kinda give you a student bit of insight. So Ed Fund works with the community as a whole, while Give and Go tackles more of the individual needs. And it's more education-based for Ed Funds. Like if you have, you know, needs for like sports or whatever, you do an application through Give and Go. Whereas on a bigger scale, like I said, the Math and Writing Center, that's more of a challenge that Ed Fund can tackle.
Well put. Kathy, you wanna add to that?
No, I think Arthur hit it. You know, basically, the Edina Education Fund works within the school period day. So we work with educational opportunities for all students across all 10 locations. Edina Give and Go typically works outside the school day, and it's more on an individual scholarship basis. Just to bring one other group in there, hopefully not to confuse, confuse people, there's the PTOs. They work on an individual site basis. And we work hand-in-hand with them to bring things to their site that they possibly can't afford during that school day.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
And thank you for all the work.
You're welcome.
It was fun to attend your last meeting.
Oh, we're glad to have you there.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone wants removed from the consent agenda? I do have, yes, I'm gonna request moving, removing board committees from the consent agenda. So that's now, we'll follow after the consent. Is there anything else anyone wants removed from consent? Alright, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. So on board committees, so there's a couple of changes that I'm gonna propose. So one is in response to the Ed Fund great presentation, I'm gonna actually suggest that we add a third board has a high school, so I've asked Ellen to step in there, and she's agreed to step in there. And then for Cornelia, I would swap in either Erica or myself into Cornelia. Since I didn't ask Erica before today's meeting, I don't know if she had... Okay. So maybe we'll just do both on that one also, kind of break from tradition. So those are the recommendations. Are there any comments or questions or concerns? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the Board Committee Appointments as amended? All right. Any questions or discussions? All those in favors of approving the Board Committee Appointments as amended, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Just get my bearings. So next is, if I remember my prior motion, Leadership Update. And so the Leadership Update for today's meeting is, the Board, on August 26, the Board met in closed session to do an evaluation of the Superintendent. And in general, the Board's conclusion is that Superintendent Schultz has performed very well. We indicated a number of areas of exceptional work, which I'm going to go through, and then there are a couple of areas of improvement. So areas of exceptional work were financial oversight of the district. That kind of puts a little pressure on John to keep it up. Superintendent presented a budget to the Board that met the goals of increasing the fund balance to an excess of 6%, while preserving key programs. In addition, as is his practice, he brought key stakeholders to respond to questions regarding the budget cuts. Dr. Schultz also continues to provide leadership regarding key staff positions. These positions make the district more effective going forward. He's also done very well in building relationships with the community, with Board Members, teachers, and interested community members. This enables him to respond and lead. He has responded well to issues as they arise. And then our major areas that we've looked at for improvement is, the Board would like to see more consistent, understandable data going forward, particularly as to student performance. And the Board would like more involvement by Dr. Schultz in guiding the Board. While we appreciate the opportunity for the Board to work through issues, the Board believes that we could be more effective if we received additional guidance from the Superintendent. So with that said, on behalf of the Board, I want to congratulate you on a very good year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we are on to Discussion Items. And our initial item is Technology Item, Technology Update. Sorry. So Steve, and a series of others. Laurie, Mike, and Sean. Welcome.
Thank you for giving us the time to talk technology with this group. It's a great opportunity. I think we know that technology is pervasive in not only in education, but in our society and how technology is being used. Tonight, I'd like to provide the update, but the first thing I want to do is I want to sum up our real, our thinking about how we manage, support, use, instruct around technology, because I think it's really important. And that is the word intentional, or being intentional, deliberate, or purposeful. Because in the last two or three years, we have really started to focus on that idea of intentionality. And I'll have the privilege to talk a little bit about our technology vision, and specifically about four core goals about that. And the interesting thing about it, you won't see the word "technology" in any of those four components, but I think our technology is the lever in all four of those areas. How do we unleash a passion for learning? How do we ensure that our kiddos have smiles on their face, or they're stepping into the learning? Because we know when we have kids or adults and we're interested in learning, that process of learning just becomes that much easier. Technology is a lever for that, when we're intentional. Our greatest asset in this district is our teachers, our educators. They're phenomenal. Where 85% of the resources that we put in this is our educators. How do we make them not 1 plus 1, but 2 times 2? Technology is a lever to help us with that. Technology and communication go synonymous. How do we engage our parents, our stakeholders, our community, so that we're working collaboratively, working on solving problems, on engaging, on constantly learning in how to support our kids? Technology helps us with that. And then finally, how are we ensuring that the investment this community has put into technology, put into us, put into the way we leverage technology is being maximized, or efficient stewards of that investment? Technology helps us with that. I'm going to talk a little bit just about the nuts and bolts, because it's really important that we start at a foundation to understand how we support, how we maintain, how we keep our infrastructure safe. This is a graph from last spring, and it shows that at any given point of the day, we're over 1 gigabit of internet traffic. So how we ensure that that traffic is filtered, how we ensure that our students are safe, how we're sure that we're able to access the content we want, because we're intentional about making sure that we have the network and the gear in order to support that type of bandwidth. How do we ensure the physical servers, or the servers that we have, now over 100 servers in the district, are being maintained, are being patched for security, how we're refreshing those? And as you see, the number that we're really proud of is this number 2. It's not a lot, but we're moving more of our devices, more of our servers to the cloud. If you think of all the ways everything touches this network, you'd be astounded. From servers, Internet of Things like lights, security systems, door buzzers, video cameras, network gear, cameras, printers, projectors, phones, iOS devices, guest wireless devices, and our Chromebooks, we have over 17,000 objects connecting to our district network at any given time. It's incredible. We have to be intentional about how we support that, how we ensure it's secure, and how we refresh those devices when we need to. We need to be intentional about our information systems. We could buy one monolithic system that tries to do everything, and we've learned from our mistakes, that's probably not the best way. But instead, how do we interconnect these systems so that they provide a personalized way for our staff, our students, to communicate, to provide things like our digital classroom, our warning system, our portfolio, deliver assessments? We do that through our Edina Apps. Here's just a flavor of Edina Apps that your students and teachers work with every day. But we go beyond that. And what I think is an unsung work of my team is that we interconnect all these through single sign-on as much as possible. And so the same portal that our students and our staff access, our parents access as well. So we're intentional about making sure that that's in one spot, that we can support both our students and our staffs, but also our families connecting. I'm going to turn it over to Laurie Holland to talk a little bit about the Media Program, but before I do that, I just want to have a shout-out, because our department is Department of Media and Technology. And we do a lot around technology, but unsung heroes are our media specialists in this district. I know a lot of you have volunteered, and a lot of you understand that our media centers in our buildings are really the heart and soul of our classrooms. And I'm going to give you just one small, if I can diverge, one small anecdote. This fall, when we were getting back together as a team, I asked everyone to share what their favorite moment of the summer was. What was their highlight of the summer? For me, it was going to Europe with my daughter. For the Elementary Media Specialists, it was getting together and working in PLCs and collaborating on scope and sequence. That's a dedicated group. And now I think I'll have Laurie talk a little bit more about what that program does.
The graphic you're viewing represents the many ways in which Edina's Media Program helps Edina's students to thrive. As an Elementary Media Specialist, I am the only teacher in the building who teaches every student, every week, every year of their elementary school career. That's an opportunity for at least 216 different lessons throughout their K-5 experience, not including the many, many, many interactions that occur during the many, many, many individual trips to the library. During those interactions, we watch our students grow as readers. We come to know their likes, their dislikes, their interests and abilities, so that even with hundreds of books to choose from, we can match the perfect book to each reader. We also nurture a lifelong love of reading through school-wide literacy events like Camp Read-A-Lot, Read Across America, participation in the state book awards, author visits, book fairs, book swaps, and summer reading programs. Having that perfect book requires the development of a quality library collection. Edina's Media Specialists keep up with the latest and greatest in children's and young adult literature by reading widely ourselves and consulting numerous professional review sources. Collections are also developed to support Edina's curriculum, providing quality books, eBooks, and reference materials for classroom use. Each of the elementary school libraries circulates between 30,000 and 50,000 books each year. We also help teachers and students find the most relevant, reliable, and age-appropriate information online, whether from subscription database services or websites curated in our own customized project pathfinders. By providing a wide variety of multicultural literature written by a diverse array of authors and illustrators, and through involvement in such activities as the Global Read-A-Loud and Mystery Skyping, Edina's Media Specialists also use literature and technology to help expand students' worldview. In addition to providing diverse and quality resources, Edina's Media Specialists partner with classroom teachers to teach inquiry and research skills. We help design research projects and provide lessons on Edina's inquiry process, searching effectively, evaluating information, using databases, note-taking, avoiding plagiarism, citing sources, and communicating in a variety of formats. As the onsite technology integrationists, we also partner with teachers to integrate and teach the best technology applications to achieve their content learning goals. Whether audio, video, virtual reality, or apps and online tools for creating presentations, webpages, timelines, thinking maps, eBooks, and more, we are there with suggestions and always willing to co-teach. All of Edina's Media Specialists are certified common sense media educators. We teach and support our students in becoming responsible digital citizens with a scope and sequence of skills that begins in kindergarten and includes instruction in media balance, privacy and security, relationships and communication, cyberbullying, and information, news, and media literacy. From newsletters to library webpages to social media to school news shows, Edina's Media Specialists also show and tell what is happening in our schools by documenting school, classroom, and library activities in shared photos and videos. We partner with parents to inform them of helpful resources accessible from home, provide book recommendations and suggested reading lists, and welcome them into our libraries as invaluable library volunteers. Important community partnerships facilitated through the library include those with local libraries and bookstores, and arrange visits with unforgettable local authors and illustrators. In recent years, the expansion of our school libraries to include Makerspaces has empowered us to provide 3D printers, robotics, animation, and digital video creation tools, among a variety of other things. We are now even better equipped to support students' exploration, discovery, creativity, innovation, and learning. All of the many ways we help Edina students to thrive have their roots in the American Association of School Librarians National Standards and the National ISTI Technology Standards for Students. Thank you.
I'm going to have Mike Walker, who's our secondary digital age, our digital learning specialist, talk a little bit about digital age learning and how it's being used.
Yeah, so as you see in this graphic, we utilize technology as a way to help support our Edina learning framework of allowing students the opportunity to look at different pathways for exploring content, engaging in that content, and then how they express learning. It isn't just a 30-point multiple-choice test anymore. They could be creating videos, creating presentations, and other things to express their learning. Excellent. This summer, we, as part of our eLearning Squared program, we made a shift at the sixth-grade level with students getting a district-owned device as opposed to having the option for bring your own device. So all of our sixth-grade students have a Chromebook that is checked out to them. And as part of that, we really wanted to have a, make sure that everybody was on the same page in regards to expectations. So we ran some boot camps. And in those boot camps, we talked about expectation for students, for staff, as well as for parents at home. When we talk with students, we talk a lot about our acceptable use policy, Policy 634, and within that, the Online Code of Ethics that is part of that. And we talk about just our general norms, and how to behave properly, and how to get the positive benefits of technology as opposed to the negative, and how to become a digital learner so that they are able to manage that, as opposed to having it managed by someone else. With our staff, we've done a lot around, as Steve talked about, intentionality, where we went around to all of our buildings and talked to them about the different norms and expectations, knowing the answers of why they're using technology, how often am I using it in class, and then what happens if there's misuse. In regards to that, how often, we've been really monitoring screen time and looking at the American Academy of Pediatrics research in regards to the amounts of screen time. And we're happy to report that it's way below what they say is a maximum for a school day, or during the day in general. And then we publish, the teachers publish those norms. Then we also have talked a lot with our parents in regards to norms at home. And that American Academy of Pediatrics, they have a great family media plan where you can put in the ages of your children and get some really good recommendations on how to have a healthy digital diet. Because really, that whole thing about screen time, we kind of think of that a lot like food. We know that there is healthy food. I had some vegetables for dinner tonight. But we also know that there's junk food as well. And so if a student is working on maybe designing a website, or creating video, or something like that, where they're using their creative aspects with technology, or maybe they're even just skyping with a grandparent, that's a different way of using technology than looking at 5,000 memes in 10 minutes. So having that healthy, healthy diet is important. But for our parents to stay informed and to set limits, and to model positive behavior, you know? It's interesting, as I've been talking to parents about modeling behavior, sometimes I look out in the audience, and there's somebody who's on their cellphone not paying attention. And so how do we model that for our children? I think it's really important. But also, having good balance. It's really important to have good balance. And so looking for ways to say, hey, let's have a no-digital night, or say, during meals, we're not going to get our phones out, so that we're having some face-to-face interaction, or getting out, exploring in the woods without a device, so.
So quickly, I just want to have Sean Beaverson, who's our Digital Learning Specialist at the elementary, talk about an exciting piece that we've been working on, and which is, what is the future of a digital classroom looks like? And so we are constantly looking at technology and intentional about technology, but technology's constantly changing. The lifecycle of a computer is 18 months. Some of our technology is a little bit older, and we want to make sure that the technology we're putting into our classrooms is future-proof. It's going to serve our teachers, but it's going to be a cost-effective solution. So maybe, Sean, you can talk a little bit about our digital classroom design work?
All right. So this is my second year here at Edina Public Schools, and last year, I was helping to plug in wires at Highlands Elementary, because they were finishing the construction projects that was across all the elementary schools. So during that year, we started to say, well, the construction is settling down, and now it's time to look at what else we can update in our learning spaces, and what can we standardize? And so during that process, we began to look at what are the requirements of a digital classroom, and what are the elements of a digital classroom that will sustain over time? And so here's the guiding questions that were presented to staff during the last winter. What are the elements of our current solutions that we cannot live without? What are the important elements that we need that helping
So during that year, we started to say, well, the construction is settling down, and now it's time to look at what else we can update in our learning spaces and what can we standardize. And so during that process, we began to look at what are the requirements of a digital classroom, and what are the elements of a digital classroom that will sustain over time? And so here's the guiding questions that were presented to staff during the last winter. What are the elements of our current solutions that we cannot live without? What are the important elements that we need that help engage students and develop a passion for learning? What are the current shortcomings and frustrations of what we have available in our classrooms? And so is it reliability? Is it usability? Is it a good idea in thought, but not so in practice? And so what might we change in that to make that better? And then as we consider the rapid pace of technology and the amount of time that we've been a one-to-one district or close to a one-to-one district, what are the new and interesting features that we'd like to see added? And so when we think about very much how it's changed in the processing power, you know, the cellphone that we hold in our hand now outpaces the rocket ships that they sent to the moon by thousands of times. And so what is it that we'd like to see that we could add now? And then as we make these changes, as we think about altering practice by looking at the digital classroom standards across our system, starting at the elementary, what do we do? How do we communicate? How do we collaborate? And how do we work to best hold our teachers and our students as harmless as possible during that process? So those were our guiding questions, and then we began this work starting last winter. So last winter in January, Steve and I met with each of the elementary sites, building leadership teams, communicated the plan, took a look at, you know, how long it would take us to do this, gathered a group of teacher explorers for us in the spring to work with us. Those explorers represented all of the elementary sites and across all of the grade levels, including specialists. And then based on that feedback, put together some training materials for the summer work. And in the summer, we had fifty-six teachers, again, across all elementary sites and across all grade levels, and again, including specialists, to complete some training. And we continue that work this fall. We are just, I just installed a couple more of these interactive panels into a couple of other classrooms, and so we're seeing how people are going about using these. I had a wonderful meeting with the music, a music teacher over at Highlands, Catherine Wadeen, this afternoon to help her solve some problems. Her enthusiasm for the solution that we are developing was, was it relieving? No, it wasn't relieving, it was exciting. It was really compelling that she found answers that she was excited about and could see the long-term future of. So we continue to do that work, and then we will collect feedback and be back to this board to present a plan going forward sometime yet this fall.
Great. Well, we took a little bit more time than I thought, but that's all right, because I think you understand that the way technology touches our lives, not only within the district but outside the district, is incredible amount. And so making sure that we're intentional about how we purchase technology, how we support technology, how we manage technology, and how technology impacts and touches our students is something that we take very seriously in our department. And I just want to, again, extend a large thank you to the library media specialists, DMTS, our digital learning specialists, and our collaboration with teaching and learning department, and I'll take any questions at this time.
First off, I just want to thank you very much for having as the centerpiece of all of this intentionality, because technology advances so quickly and we can't be passive with it, both in terms of security, what are the attacks coming, protecting our kids, seeking initiatives for learning. It's so fast, and you can't sit on your hands. And you, in your slide presentation, just absolutely highlighted that, so I commend you for that orientation. I did have a question, what is the one-to-one districts? I think I somehow missed with that term.
That's a, that's a great question. So many districts, what they've done is they've changed the philosophy around technology. It used to be where you would go to a lab where there'd be thirty computers, and so what you do is sometime during the week, you would have Computer Lab Day where you would go down and do instruction. And as technology devices have become cheaper and access to technology devices has become more prevalent, many school districts have transformed that. And so instead of going someplace to use technology, technology is with you. And so all of our students from grades three through twelve have a device in the third through, third through fifth grade at the elementary schools. Those are in a cart that stay in that classroom and don't go home with those students, but at any given time, we're appropriate, the teachers, we work with the teachers on identifying that appropriate use, but they have access to that technology. Then starting in sixth grade, with the help of Mike, and then the Chromebooks that we've distributed, every student has a device, and so that's where they'll get involved with Schoology, being able to access their online textbooks and their content, doing feedback, working collaboratively, and working in that digital age learning ecosystem.
I just had a quick question around the sixth grade new plan with actually providing the Chromebooks. How has that begun, and how are the kids and parents and teachers receptive to it?
I want to call out Mike Walker and Jack Silasky and the secondary media specialist for helping to implement that. I think it's going well. We talked today at the Valley View staff, there was no complaints, and actually, they were very thankful for it. So a couple of things that I think are working in our favor, one is, is that the, though our ecosystem was such that you could access it with any different, different devices, by having the same device, it seems like there just seems to allow for consistency for that sixth grade classes, so they can talk about norms and talk about consistency and talk about control. And so we think it's a great idea, maybe to tamp down just a tad on choice as we move through those grade levels. That's how, worked out really well. The other thing that I think worked out very well was we had every sixth grade parent attend that boot camp. And it was really funny, because we had a number of sixth grade parents that thought that this is a class for their students. It was not. This was a class for the parent to understand our intentionality of the use of technology. So a couple of parents were a little angry with me when I said, no, you cannot leave, you need to sit next to your child in this class and take this class, because it's not about your student. We're going to have your kiddos all year, and we're going to work on intentionality with the kiddos. We just want to make sure that you're on the same page with us as we go through this. So it's gone, it's gone fairly well, and we'll continue to get feedback and get input from our stakeholders.
So you mentioned trying to narrow the device of choice. Does that, is that primarily going to be focused on six-eight, whereas nine-twelve, you'll, by then, they've developed enough to kind of make a choice that's their own?
I think that's, that's a great question. I think that's the question that we're going to need to study. We have a few years before we get there, we believe, so our intention is to evaluate this year. All signs point that it's working well, and then that would mean that next year, sixth grade incoming students, we provide them with a device. So we'd eventually go district-assigned one-to-one at the middle school level. We have a few years to gather research and data, and then we will engage at that high school level, and we'll start talking about what is our philosophy around choice and around personalization of technology, and about habits of those kiddos. Because we know when those students go into college, they'll be bringing their own device, they'll be, it'll be an expectation. So we're going to, we're going to study that closely, and then as we get closer to that, have to make a decision at that level, at that time.
Forgive me, when did the sixth grade class partnership start?
So we've been doing a, that's a great, we've, we've had a, what we call a blended or a hybrid one-to-one in the Edina Public Schools for over five years. And so we started at ninth grade, I think, six years ago, and then we expanded both up and down from that about five years ago. And so we've had the one-to-one program where the expectation is, is that the student brings a device fully charged with a keyboard, so they can be a full participant in learning. If they choose not to bring a device, we provided them a district-supplied Chromebook. And so through that, either bringing a device or having a district-supplied Chromebook, every student had a device for about the last five years.
I think the idea of bringing in the parents is an excellent one, because the parents need to and should, and many want to, know what their kids are using with their technology. It feels like a black box. And as I've said before here, that the technology sometimes serves as a wedge between the parents and the kids. And if you can start bringing the parents in and letting them know what's happening, so much the better. So I think that that's a really good idea.
Thank you. And just not, not to put another pitch in, but we are in, in partnership with community education, we are having an evening in October, and we're going to screen the movie Screenagers, and so there'll be a panel discussion, and we'll be talking about that. So that's a little bit more like screen time and what the role of, of the impact of being on all these devices and the impact. But we're, we will be there, we'll be there again in partnership with our community to have that discussion, just as you point out, so that we're all educated, we're all partnering, making sure that we're all on the same page. Because it really, each one of us has a role in this to ensure that our students are making good choices and healthy choices around technology.
I had a, I guess, a broader question for you guys. There's a lot of, not only does technology change every day, every minute, but there is a lot of emerging research about how technology affects students and youths and growing brains, everything from using a digital textbook versus using hard print. I just saw a study about flipped classrooms and that they might contribute to the achievement gap. I would love to see whether it's part of our strategic plan, and I know you had mentioned this, Ellen, about incorporating some of this in the strategic plan, or if it's a side issue, I would love to see us as a board and as a technology team and as an administration team, come together and look at coming up with some, like, digital guiding principles that we believe in as a school district, that current research says X, Y, and Z, so therefore, we're going to, I don't even want to say anything, because then we'll end up on Facebook, but, but really taking into consideration large strategic global things that we know about technology and students' brains, and have a perspective about it, and tell parents this is our perspective, and because that's our perspective, this is what we're going to do about it. And I think you guys are doing a great job with a lot of the initiatives that you're putting in place, but I think there's some other areas that we can really look into about, like I said, like with the textbooks and things like that, where I think we could take a proactive role in educating parents, and, and I just think that would be great for our district and for parents and for students alike.
And I, for one, would welcome that conversation, because I, I think you're absolutely right. We do not, this, this is, this is a fast-paced change happening right here. And so some of the times, some of these impacts of these changes, we won't know the repercussions, both good, positive or negative, for a few years. And so having a thoughtful approach into that, it makes a lot of sense. I do know that our media specialist, that's a lot of work that they're doing around research, around books, and around this idea of digital citizenship. And we're following the, the research as it comes out, so about this idea of screen time, about limiting access to technology, what are some of the limits we want to put on? So we are, we are monitoring that and measuring that and stepping into those conversations. I think having a discussion about loosen tights around that, that warrants a good discussion, and I welcome, look forward to it.
And I think just an example of, of that is the issue of taking notes. We know the research says that taking notes on paper is a better way, the retention is better doing it that way. We also know that some kids can't read their handwriting. And so for the majority of kids, we're going to say, take notes in your notebook, and then use those notes to put together a graphic organizer or something on your device as a way to memorize it, or put it in a Quizlet as a way to test yourself. But we know kids with an IEP might really benefit from taking their notes on their device so that they can read them, so.
I was going to make one really quick comment. I think you guys do a fantastic job. I just got a message from my wife, because my son, who should be asleep, is watching apparently, and said, is that Mrs. Holland? So the reach you guys have, the kids is amazing. And we've been talking as a board about the benefits and things in Edina that we do exceptionally as a district. And Mary, you've done an awesome job with communications. There's probably a way to, to amplify the amount of intentionality we use around technology and the group, and really highlight this, because this is a wonderful team, and thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Next, we have policy updates, Policy 606, Amir. There's a lot of, like, crossouts, but I'm not sure how many substantive changes there actually are.
Yeah, so Policy 606 lived up to its name. It's about some controversy, and it actually didn't make it through the last cycle, partially because we got focused on some other major, major work, like the superintendent search, and then onboarding a new board, and the strategic plan. And so it seemed, it seemed like it was something that was maybe more for an experienced board, and yet, as we came back to it, it's kind of funny, over the years, it's hard to exactly see where the controversy was. This went through a policy committee, we worked with Director of Teaching and Learning, Superintendent, and what came out didn't really have many major objections, in fact, not terribly substantial changes, although there are, there are some worth noting, and I want to go down them right now. One of them is that we clarified the process of what would happen if, if an objection came in about a certain text being used, or materials, content in general, and this happens occasionally. And our, actually, our policy said those, those objections should go to the building principal. And this updates that and says, actually, we should send your objections to the teacher to try to resolve things at that lowest level. And if that, if that doesn't seem to be working, if you can't get a resolution, then there's a policy, a procedure here, but it's actually moved down to the appendix, which is a little more where guidance typically goes. And as you go down there, some of the same things as before, treat their, each request with confidentiality, teacher, student, family working to come to a resolution. But if it can't be reached, the process would be that it's brought to a building team, and that would include some teachers, administrators, might include the Director of Teaching and Learning, or somebody else from the district office, to really try to reach a resolution. The families can propose an alternative means to reach the same educational goals, and see if, if the teachers and the building team really agree that that's substantially similar. Maybe you reach consensus there, you found an alternative means of instruction rather than going through what was initially planned for that student, and maybe not. And if, if not, you can continue to work, but the, the procedure does specify that the decision of the superintendent or designee, as these, you know, contentions continue to arise, would be final. There is a reference here to a plan that goes forward to have some consideration, not only to the educational merit of the alternative, but also to the time away from the general learning environment, with acknowledgement that interaction with peers, the ability to articulate your thoughts to them and listen to their thoughts and respond in kind is of value. And so there's a reference here to not being out for an unreasonable amount of time without the agreement of parents or guardians, but it's, it's not listed as a definition, it's more of one of those phrases that says, we're to consider that aspect of it. All right, so that was an updated procedure there. The appendix, Appendix Four is also an area that has had some, you know, its fair share of attention and controversy, and that has some light edits as well. It really talks about what issues are largely considered inbounds and what are not. And there's a change there that's worth considering as well. Used to be a little more restrictive as to which, as which controversial issues could come up in class. We would say it has to be related to the course, coming up naturally in the curriculum or brought up by, by students. And then from there, there are a lot of guidelines about, well, really trying to spell out what's, what's professional, that all sides are given a proper hearing. The issue has points of view which can be understood and defined by students, the teacher's not putting forward their own religious, political, economic, or social bias. But the, we did say the teacher may express a personal opinion if they identify it as such and does not express that opinion for the purpose of persuading people, but, you know, more of an educational reason to bring it up. What's edited there, though, is instead of saying the controversial issue must be related to the course, coming up in the curriculum, or brought up by students, a clause of, or related to relevant current events, inserted. And I think that's something that the whole board should have a topic or a chance to think about, because on the one hand, that's, that's a pretty big opening to bringing up a lot of different issues. On the other hand, it may be too limiting without it. And so I wanted to hear some of your opinions, what you think about that point, as well as the reference to unreasonable time away from the general setting, and broadly, just the whole idea of how to respond to objections, knowing that as a school serving so many students, there's not, there's not a whole lot that can change, but certainly, we should do our best to try to reach consensus with students and their families.
So do we know if teachers who are the first line, whether they're So do we know if teachers who are the first line, whether they're comfortable with these changes? So, I mean, when I look at the changes, for example, that the first contact is them versus the principal, I mean, that seems to make sense to me. So are they okay with that? And then the second is adding relevant current events. Are they fine with broadening the scope of what's permissible?
So as with most, we don't have, we don't have a mechanism of bouncing these off of teachers before they come to the board, so I wouldn't be able to answer that, no.
Okay. So maybe, so I think they said that Randy Smazel was okay with this. And so maybe he can just take a, figure out just some gentle inquiry in that area to make sure that we don't get ahead of our teachers. The other question I have is if you go to Appendix 1, number 3, I'm looking at the edited version here, 3A. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what that says. I don't know if you're, let me know when you get there, Amir. Okay, so this looks like a process to review proposed alternative curriculum, right? The team should review the initial request, including the proposed solution. So that's what a, I'm just trying to figure out, when I get to A, it says the team should use the table blow to determine the degree to which the objectionable material meets the criteria. So if this is to decide if alternative material is okay, then it's not objectionable material, it's the proposed solution meets the criteria. If this is to say, no, no, the objectional material is good, then objectional material is the right language. So I'm just trying to figure out where 3A is going.
Is an A to review the objectionable and B is to review the proposed?
Right, so I hear your point, like you're saying, why would we review the material someone objected to? But if what they're saying is not just that I respect the rights of others, but my family personally would rather not partake in this, then you would say, well, why are we even reviewing the material? But if someone's actually saying, I want to bring to your attention a problem, this is the criteria with which that teacher or building team would look through. And that's why it says, when you're looking at a text that someone else has objected to, but the building team is considering not just, you know, some kind of a straw poll among a group of parents that they're talking to, but academic standards of the educational program, the needs of the, the needs, age, maturity of the students, et cetera, goes down the table. So it's, it's a process to respond to the complaint in a way that doesn't say, we're not even gonna listen to you on the merits. We'll just try to figure out your own personal workaround. And I forget who drafted that, but there was a lot of input from administration in the three years previous cycle. So I don't think this came from board members.
So the objective for this section is to review the objection. And by the way, I'm not, I don't have an objection to the changes here. I'm just trying to make sure I understand them. The, we're trying to review this, so if someone makes an objection and then we're going to review their objection and review their proposed alternative and then make a decision within this section on which we're going to require? Which we're going to require the student to follow?
Yeah, so, okay, that's, so the assumption then is the text is valid, that we're keeping the text. And then you're looking for a resolution when a, when a parent says, well, I'd rather my child not read that text or do these, work with these materials. Okay, so you're looking for consensus. That's the big point. You're trying to find a way forward so the child can still get the educational value that was inspiring the original educational choices. And you're trying to find a way forward. The reason we say the decision would be final if ultimately there's no consensus is the, we're not surrendering the, the decision about what the educational standards are that we're trying to meet and what, what a quality program looks like. You're just open to proposals on an individual basis, individual basis in these events, which have happened over the years and very few of them, you know, have trouble reaching consensus at some point. But occasionally it happens as well, which is why we put in the, the final decision. And we're trying to keep it broad because these are, these are boundaries for how do you respond to this sort of thing without, without trying to foresee the details of a particular conversation.
All right. I appreciate the committee taking this one on and coming up with a draft for us. Are there other questions?
The question that you and we were just working on with Lenny, is, is the core difference if the objection from the parent is content-based as in the material is objectional, say, or they feel it's sexually related or something that, that is objectional to the family based on more personal values versus objectional that I don't think this curriculum is meeting the needs of, of the science standard? I mean, is that the difference? Because I think if it's, because the way I read it, if, if the parent is objectioning, objecting based on a personal family situation, there'd be really no reason to review it because the other kids will probably continue using that material and they'll be looking for a new material for their student. But if they're, they were, the only reason I would see to review the, the text would be is if they're really trying to say this is not meeting the needs of even teaching any of the kids. Is that the, the difference here?
You might be onto something. It's a little hard to say. Certainly, we're not, this isn't the kind of thing if somebody says, my child doesn't need to review Newton's Laws, that's too easy. I want a different plan. I mean, that's, that seems like a very different conversation. This is more along the lines of people saying that this, this material in particular is inappropriate in of itself for the age or for minors, whatever the particular argument is. So does that answer your question?
I think the question is then, is it required for the teacher to review that? Because I would assume on face value that then the answer is if it's inappropriate, okay, we'll give you an alternative assignment. When and where and why do we invoke the teacher being required to review?
Gotcha, so the whole review, that's under the team review. The ones, if something were elevated to a principle, it's not just a principle. If elevated to, to the district office, it's not just the district office. That's the team review. The only time we refer to the teacher is, is more like the common sense. Try not to, try not to make things a district committee issue if you haven't even mentioned to the teacher your concern. It's not meant to make the teacher walk through a checklist of things before they get any support, not at all, but just actually more so empowering and validating the teachers to say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna pull you out and start having this conversation ourselves. But, and, you know, frankly, they should know if somebody's talking to administrators about choices made by, say, a department or a teacher or whatever the case may be. So that's, it's not meant to be a burden to the teacher. It's meant to be a sign of professionalism, respect, and frankly, efficient way of resolving any, any concerns that students or families have.
Right, I think that what I'm, what I'm, what we're missing here is, A specifically says teams should first use the table blow to determine the degree to which the objectional material meets the criteria. My point is, are we saying that, you know, if, if the parent comes and says, this book, it is objectionable to my family values and my student is not going to read this, do they have to do A? Or, because to me, the policy states that, no, we've already moved on from A and we're going to find something else for your student. So I'm, A to me seems like it's applicable in certain situations, but not generally. And so I just wanted to make sure that, that that was clear because I don't, I think if it's a, the fact, if it's a values-based question from a parent, objection from a parent, I don't think it's our right to say, well, we still believe that your child should read it. I mean, that's generally where this policy has gone.
Yeah, so I think that would be a very short agenda item. If, if A was just a check that the material fits broadly and move on to B for the resolution, I think that would be very easy for the committee team to do.
I think it would just help to have some clarifying language as to when and where
Yes.
these processes are used.
It's kind of a where appropriate, kind of, A is kind of a where appropriate. I don't know the proper legalese to put in there, but it just, it feels like a step that is not always really going to be generally used depending on the type of objection.
I would just take a look again at 3A, B, C.
And maybe when all the, quite frankly, maybe when all the cutting and pasting is out, it might flow better and make more sense. It's sometimes hard to read, even though I know we asked you to give it to us this way as well.
All right, so I'll, I'll take a look at it again and if I can come up with a suggestion, I'll shoot it over to you for the next policy meeting.
Trying to make sure we can do this with, with a committee of three people talking about it with input from a fourth.
Do, okay, so an example would be?
I'll watch the video here again if that helps.
Well, I just want to make sure that the language is appropriate so that nobody reading the policy, not that, not the teacher, not the principal, not the parent, feels that step A. If, if you say, and this one, we've had this come to us as a board before, I don't want my child to read The Color Purple because there's a, there's, there's scenes within it that I feel are inappropriate for my student. So it's not that we're asking it to be removed from the class, from that student. To me then, going through A is unnecessary. That's my point. Thank you.
So just to add on to that, I think it's the question or clarifying part is when would you actually use
Yes.
that part, A?
Yes.
That's it.
Right.
Thanks. I am, push your button.
Your button.
And I just wanted to say something I usually catch that I didn't catch on this. Appendix 4, we've been changing he slash she to they throughout. So when you get this back, we'll be fixing that.
Was there any input on the idea of relevant current events being an avenue for controversy issues to come up for discussion in the classroom?
So I think this question sort of has come up before in terms of there are teachers who say, you know, there's something that happened and they wanted to talk about it, but they weren't sure that it was, that it was okay. And so I think this authorizes them to do so. And so in that sense, I think it's appropriate.
I think it's one of those issues, yeah, I agree with what Lenny's saying, but at the same time, it's, it all depends on the situation and, and the particular topic. I mean, it's hard to make a blanket statement that's going to cover every possible topic that could come up. You know, there could be a mass murder, that's the hot news item of the day, but it may not be necessarily appropriate even though it's a current topic. So I think we have to give some deference if we're going to use that language, that there'll be, you know, a judgment made that is appropriate to that classroom based on their age, what the subject material is that's being taught in that course. I'm, I'm comfortable with the language. I just, I, I hope that, again, we'll, we'll use it with deference.
Thank you very much.
So all of those criteria are supposed to be met, one through nine. So that it has to be relevant, plus then it has to have all these other factors. So, I mean, that provides kind of a roadmap for discussion, which I think, to me, provides a solid basis to expand what's okay. Any other questions?
Thank you for your work.
All right, next we have general obligation bonds. Can I get a motion to approve the refunding of the general obligation bonds, Series 219B? And John, you are up. This is a good one because this one's going to save us money.
Good evening, Chair Wallen-Friedman, Superintendent Schultz, and members of the board. Thank you. This is the first of two items that are directly related to the third item, our property tax levy that will be coming up here soon. And I believe Margot Balk and Jody Zesba from Ellers and Associates, last spring when we issued the long-term facility maintenance bonds, mentioned that this opportunity would be coming up in October. Interest rates have remained fairly stable and so we do have this opportunity that's coming up to refund our 2011B bonds, which I believe were also refinanced. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Greg Crowe from Ellers and Associates, our financial advisors, and he'll go over the particulars of the pre-sale report. Greg?
Thanks, John. Thanks for having me here tonight. Nice to see you all again. I think you're a little more used to seeing Jody, but I won the arm wrestling contest, so I got to come tonight and, and share the good news. So I'm Greg Crowe. I'm actually the principal of the education team at Ellers. So I'm also Jody's boss, which you can imagine is pretty hard to do, but we have a good team and we have a lot of fun. So it's nice to be here and you are all pretty good at issuing bonds. So I'm not going to go in-depth into the pre-sale report, which is really a due diligence document that explains how the bond issuance process works and updates you with our financial estimates. As John mentioned, when Jody was here this spring for the bond sale, she talked about this opportunity, rates have actually come down a little bit. So we talked about 1.1 million of potential savings to the district's taxpayers. As you know, it doesn't provide additional funds for projects. It reduces property taxes. We're now looking at more like 1.4, 1.5 million. And we can look at the details, but basically the true interest cost we're projecting is a bit lower because rates have steadily declined since this, since this spring. We have seen a little bit of a uptick at the beginning of September with some stability in, in the trade discussions. All of that is sort of flowing through and now we'll see how all this action in the Middle East will affect rates. But generally instability tends to drive investors to stable investments like municipal bonds, which tends to bring down interest rates. And so that's, that's typically a good thing when you're going out in the market to sell bonds. So let's look at the pre-sale report. Page one, there's a purposes paragraph that basically describes everything about the finances. As mentioned, we're refinancing and this is just like basically refinancing a mortgage, but more complicated because it's tax exempt municipal debt. The initial issuance was about $50 million. There's around 8 million, or 21.8 million bonds outstanding that will be refinanced. The existing rates were 4% to 5%, and you see page references and I won't make the projector flip back and forth, but basically the average coupon in the existing bonds, about 4.1%. So on the new bonds, we're projecting rates of 1.05% to 1.2%. As you remember, each bond payment has its own interest rate for a true interest cost of 1.3%. And so obviously a significant reduction from the 4.1%. That's, that's the current average coupon. We estimate that will reduce property tax levies or debt service payments by 1.465 million over the remaining life of the bond, which is about four or five more years. So there's four payments left, 2021 through 2024. We calculate both the future value of the benefit at 1.465 and the present value of the benefit at 1.4 million. It's a pretty short bond, so the present value is pretty close to the future value. That present value savings expressed as a percentage of refunded debt service is 6%. We throw that in because there are some measures that you're required to meet on other types of refunding, so it's kind of a nice benchmark. Certain advanced refundings, you need to get 3%. We always like to see at least 5%. So 6% is a nice refunding percentage that we're projecting on the new bonds. The bonds are, at this short of a term, are not callable. So this will be the last time you'll refinance these bonds. But I will note that going forward, you've got a couple more bond issues that are coming up on being able to be refinanced. So a year from now, we'll be having this same discussion about reducing taxes again, so.
This kind of seems like the easiest decision that we get to make.
Pardon me?
I said, this seems like the easiest decision we get to make. I mean, so far, everything I'm hearing is, let's just go forward. So to me, the question really is, so what else is out there that we could do this with? And your, what you just said suggests that we have to wait a certain timeframe on other bonds before we could refinance them.
So if you remember, when we sell bonds, we always talk about the call, call date. So basically, you say, here's how long you can, the bonds will stay outstanding until they're callable. In other words, when you can refinance them. These bonds, the 2011 bonds are callable on February 1st of 2020. And you can only call them within 90 days of that date when the bonds will close. And you'll see in the documents that the bonds will close November 14th, And you'll see in the documents that the bonds will close November 14th, which is within 90 days of February 1st. If you don't, there's a complicated process, which we've used in the past called an advanced refunding, where you basically refinance them ahead of time, put the money in an escrow account and sit on that. Part of the tax reform bill two years ago outlawed tax-exempt advanced refundings. So you don't have that option anymore. You either have to wait till call date, or you can issue taxable bonds and hold the money. But taxable bonds have a higher interest rate. And so we typically have been doing sensitivity analysis to actually see, because rates are so low, to see whether that would benefit you, and it doesn't at this point.
The time value between now and February wouldn't...
Pardon me?
I'm agreeing. Yep.
And so we do a report every six months and send to the district, and you've got 2013A bonds, there's about $10 million callable that are callable on 2/1/21. So that's what we'll be talking about in a year. You've got a couple of leases that have real small principal amounts that probably don't save enough. And then each year, starting in 2024, there are callable bonds. So we'll have one more in a year, and then it'll be a couple of years out, and it'll be 6 million, and then the big bond is callable, the 93 million that's left on that in 2025, and then working our way through. So you will, you know, regularly be reducing taxes over the next few years by refinancing your outstanding debt, and we'll keep an eye on it for you and do that analysis that I talked about. The rest of the report is fairly boilerplate, and there's a timeline on page four. We will be taking the bids on October 21st. We'll have a rating call before then, and as I mentioned, we'll close on the bonds November 14th, and that's when you receive the proceeds. There'll be an account earning interest. The authorizing resolution you have in front of you is fairly straightforward. The numbers are slightly different than in the pre-sale report because the full authorization is enough to pay off the old bonds without any interest earnings, but we do expect you to earn $45,000 or so in that fund while the $20 million sits there. So we could issue slightly less. And we also, for this purpose, we've talked about premium bids in the past, where you get more for the bonds than you're selling them for. We've basically assumed a par bid, which is, we put it to the market, get paid what you're offered. You'll probably get a premium, and in that case, we'll use the premium to pay off the old bonds, which means you issue less debt to pay off the old bonds. And so it's very likely that you'll end up with a net debt load that's lower because of the refunding, because we'll use premium to pay off the old bonds as part of the process. So that's what I have on the report, the resolution. As I mentioned, it authorizes the issuance of bonds and says you'll participate in the state credit enhancement program.
Just as treasurers, real quick, to not shortcut the conversation, but I fully support this, just as a process point, in the spring, we had phone calls, and we did it on a Wednesday, when Margot and I were back and forth on the phone. The 21st is a Monday. Is there any reason why, or is that just kind of a general timeframe for calling the bonds, putting in the bond order?
So typically, we take bids on the day of a regular school board meeting, so that we can bring the low bid to the district that night to award the bond sale.
But in the spring, what we did was we authorized me to authorize on behalf of the board, because we thought it'd be a lower issuance day, which we think benefited our overall bond bid. So is that still an option if the board is comfortable authorizing me to take a call on behalf of the board in the morning?
Yeah, that's called a parameters resolution, and we do that fairly regularly, particularly if there's a special need, where we want there to be a little more attractiveness to the bonds. I will say, your credit rating and the fact that this is a very short bond issue, four years, will make it pretty attractive regardless of the day. And volume, as we see it right now, isn't an issue.
Okay.
But it certainly is an option, but it would require us a different resolution that we'd have to bring back to the board to set that parameter. If you remember, it was a certain percentage on the interest rate of the savings.
I do.
We didn't, we have to do it when there's a holiday, like Columbus Day, for example, all the districts that are meeting on the 14th, we're doing parameters resolutions. That's more for that reason. And then on the other side of the coin, is there a reason that we need to drive more interest in the bonds? And in this case, because of the, how they look to the market and how the market looks right now, we didn't feel that was compelling.
Okay. So your recommendation...
And there's a lot of demand, so there's, I mean, we're getting...
Sure. Even in the low ones right now?
Yeah.
So you don't think it'll be a difference in terms of the interest rate, whether you do it on the 21st or 23rd or 24th this time?
That's our assessment right now, is there's not, it's probably going to be a significant difference on this structured bond.
So if three more drones hit, you know, Saudi Arabia or something, and the interest rates fluctuate a bit, sounds funny, but it just happened. So if that kind of thing happens, would you come back possibly to the board with a resolution that we would do it on a different day or timeline, or do you feel...
Sure, we could do that.
Because I wanted to make sure that we maximize that offering.
Yeah, we could certainly do that, and we obviously would watch the markets. What we don't want to do, so the call date for the bonds, February 1st, you need to give 30 days prior notice, which basically, so basically, we need to have the sale done by the end of December.
I don't want to slow it down. I just meant, in that parameter of October 15 to October 25th, if you had the ability from the board to contact me, and then, you know, if you're tracking it and you think it's 1.1 versus 1.2, that's a material saving, so.
Yeah, it would just require...
I don't want to complicate your process or slow it down, I'm asking if that's a...
It would require a separate authorizing resolution to set up a parameter or...
Can we do it right now?
Do you have a resolution?
Okay.
Did you have to post a board meeting or not post it?
The alternative would be to have a special board meeting on a different day and award sale on that, rather than doing a parameters resolution. So if you could get a quorum together on a Wednesday or a Thursday and call a special meeting.
We have our next board meeting on the 14th of October, and if you're looking to bid on the 21st, right? Could we not have a resolution on the 14th that enables by treasurer authorization to approve the bid? So if you called me on the 22nd or 23rd, for instance, because you're tracking and watching and it was lower, that I could then have the authorization to approve? Am I getting out of my skis here?
No, you're making sense.
Okay.
It's fine with me.
So if we came back, I don't want to play back another Monday night, but if we come back to the next board meeting and the resolutions put forward, that I would have authorization as a treasurer to validate the bond purchase on the day of your choice of revacquitation in that one-week parameter, would that work?
So you have a regular meeting on the 14th?
Yes.
We do.
And that's the next meeting?
It is. So therefore, it wouldn't change the timeline at all, it would just give you a little greater flexibility based on market interest rates or current...
Yeah, I think we'd know by then whether we're on a bad day or not, and...
Well, you just don't know if a drone's going to hit the 20th.
And we could certainly draft a...
But is there any downside to what...
Downside, is there?
There's no downside to what he's recommending. It just gives you a flexibility. You don't have to use it.
The official statement specifies a sale day, so we have to be careful about setting the sale day and then changing it at the last minute.
Okay.
So, because typically, the week before is when the underwriters are planning their bidding for the next week. So if we're, and we publish the official statement typically through, two weeks on a Thursday prior to the sale.
So I think the bottom line is, we're offering you whatever flexibility you can arrange, and so...
It could be a $140,000 difference if you get 0.1%. Yeah, I would just, I'd prefer, if you don't think it will complicate the process to give you an extra flexibility within a seven-day window, could you come back on the 14th? Or, John, could you organize that to be a resolution for the 14th of October?
Yes.
Okay.
We could bring something back.
Okay.
At that time, we will have tentatively set the sale, so it's a fairly minor procedure to change the date if we get to, say, the 18th and decide, you know what, the 21st is a bad day, we can do what's called an addendum to the official statement.
That's great.
Move the bid day back a couple of days.
This whole problem exists because you're cognizant of such a good job in the spring. That's why we're doing this.
Right.
So this is possible, I'd be great.
So you still need this approved tonight, though, correct?
Um...
Again, no downside to approving it?
We can approve this now, and then approve the resolution.
Yeah, just, yeah, go ahead and approve it, and then the subsequent resolution will have a revocation of the prior resolution.
Sure, okay. That works for me. Any other questions? I support this as is for now. All right. All those in favor of approving the general bond obligation school refunding bonds, series 2019B, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next, we've got the 10-year plan to submit to the Minnesota Department of Education. Can I get a motion to approve that? This is the long-term facilities plan.
So moved.
John, you're up again. You did so well the last one.
Thank you, Chair Wallen-Friedman, Superintendent Schultz, members of the Board. Tonight, we are asking for approval of the long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan. I received a phone call from MDE, the facilities person there, that informed me that we hadn't updated our 10-year plan. Each year, in the PowerPoint, as I have posted, a 10-year rolling plan needs to be updated and approved and sent to MDE by July 31st. The misunderstanding occurred when the board updated the plan in December, so we issued bonds for $24.9 million. That was assumed that that was a new 10-year plan and that no additional plan needed to be submitted to the state by July 31st. That was the misunderstanding. So we want to get this 10-year plan with formal approval by the board submitted to the Minnesota Department of Education so that we can get it on the property tax levy for our PAY-20 levy certification. The plan does cover 10 years, but it's basically focused on the next two years, fiscal year '20 and '21. The mechanical electrical systems at ECC and Valley View Middle School are the primary, is where the primary work is going to be done. There's some additional work on the exterior envelope at Southview, Edina Community Center and the high school. And there's two components that this long-term facility maintenance plan generates. One is the pay-as-you-go levy portion. That's going to be about $8,887,000. And then it also generates debt service levy revenue as well. That'll be about $2,385,000. So those two components, you know, as we look at the proposed levy coming up, won't be showing up on there. I've highlighted, and I'll go through that here in a little bit, where those components are. But tonight, we're asking for approval of the 10-year plan. There's also some revenue and expenditure worksheets and a statement of assurances, and there's a resolution for the board to approve. So I would ask for the board's approval. And any questions?
And the two-year plan, which you said was really the focus, that really hasn't changed from the last time it was before us?
No, it has not.
Okay, that's what I thought. Any questions? All those in favor of approving the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve the 2019 PAY-20 property tax levy?
Question for...
Second.
It's your night on the seat.
Thank you, Chair Wallen-Friedman, Superintendent Schultz, and members of the Board. Tonight, we are seeking approval for our proposed property tax levy for PAY-20, which will be the school district's fiscal year 2021. As I put this levy together, again, knowing that we didn't have anything on our long-term facilities maintenance plan approval yet, I had to put some numbers in. I just went over those in the plan as far as what those numbers are. And I would like to just quickly go through a little bit of that for the board. Total levy, estimated increase about 2.9 million or 5.23%. We get a number of recalculations from MDE for the property tax levies. We just had another recalculation that dropped our community education levy down by about $17,000. So we're at about 5.19% right now. And I just wanted to highlight for the public, the 24 viewers that Director Fox mentioned earlier, the step-up in our operating levy that was approved in November of '17 is coming into effect with this levy. It's increasing by about $176 per student, or about $1,620,362 based on our estimated pupil units for our PAY-20 levy. There are some other levy adjustments in our operating referendum that bring that percentage for just the operating referendum to 3.18% of that total of 5.23%. One other comment that you might get questions on is there has been a swapping of dollars between market value referendum and local optional. I think if you look at the levy document that I provided in a comparison where I gave you five years' worth of history, you'll see that that's, local optional is going way up and operating referendum's going down a little bit. The rest of the levies, general community debt service, it's about a 2.05% increase overall. So other than voter approval, we have a relatively low property tax levy amount that we're asking for as far as an increase, just a little over 2%. As I mentioned, long-term facilities maintenance, that is increasing by about $2 million to accelerate the work that the board's already approved. The long-term facilities maintenance debt levy is increasing due to the issuance of those bonds that the board approved. Our capital projects levy is increasing by 6.1% due to increased market values. We had about a 6.1% increase in our overall market value for the district's properties. And then the final thing that I mentioned in the PowerPoint is, we do want, and I would strongly suggest that, and it's my understanding that the board has done this before, is to approve the proposed levy at the maximum. There is a number of changes, a number of reruns that the MDE does that, if we authorize at the maximum, gives us the flexibility to incorporate those changes that MDE has to incorporate for all school districts in the state if they have additional corrections. And I just got a memo late last week on that. After their first levy run, they had a change in the ECFE tax rate, was updated to a new rate, community, I'm sorry, career technical aid was changed, anything on tax-based replacement aid, updated LTFM approvals, of which that would fall under us. We need to get ours approved, updated debt service and corresponding excess adjustments, and any updates to projected pupil projections that districts are doing. So there's just a number of changes that can happen between now and when we certify our final levy that I would advise that we approve it at the maximum for the proposed levy. And with that, if there's any questions, other than that, I will go to the sheet that has the levy documents highlighted here, and just want to draw your attention to that area where it's highlighted. It's 8,902,368. That is incorporating that 8,887,035 on the long-term facilities maintenance in the general fund. That's our PAY-as-you-go levy, so that's highlighted and put in there, because I want to show the board what it's going to look like, as opposed to the levy document that I did provide, which shows a really large decrease. So that's the first one. And then if you go to the next page, you'll see our all facilities, long-term facilities maintenance debt service incorporates that $2,385,000, so a total of about 2.5 million will be levied for debt service on long-term facilities maintenance. And then the final one is what Mr. Crowe was talking about earlier, the possible new referendum slash bond refunding. In this case, it's a bond refunding. Should be a credit of around $365,345. That was taken right off the pre-sale report. That'll reduce our levy downward once we get those sale results. And then the next slide shows, just a graph, I updated this so that you could see 10 years' worth of your levy and whether it's going up or down, the total dollar amounts, and then the percentage increases for each of those years. And as I looked at this, I noted a number of different years where our property tax levy was increasing significantly, but lots of it being generated by voter approval driving most of those increases. So with that, Chair Wallen-Friedman, if there's questions, I'll take them at this time.
May I?
Go ahead.
Thank you for the report. Can you share with us who, you added some great detail at the very end of the document that I have not seen... that I have not seen before, and I was just curious if you could just share with us what that is? Because the more detailed, the better, but I wasn't quite sure how to interpret it.
That is the property tax levy source document. That's the midnight reading that I get to do.
Okay.
That I did before the board meeting. That has every little nuance that you see as the state goes through their computations on the property tax levy. So it's the detailed document. I wanted to provide the board with that so they have it. I do summarize that up above in that two-page document, so I kind of condensed that down. But, you know, if you have a chance, you know, you certainly look at, like, the first page. In the middle section where you see our property valuation data, 2018 market value, ten billion, one hundred and nine million, and that's up from nine billion, five hundred and twenty million. So that's that six point one percent increase in our property values that I talked about. So it's really a good document if you want to dive down deep into the details. The thing I always tell board members with this document is, you know, don't spend a lot of time on it, but if you have a certain area that you want to look at, if you go down to, and I'm going to go way down here now, I'll reference it here. Keep going towards the bottom. I think it'd be on page 30. Yeah, if we go to page 38 of 46.
Okay.
So if you go there, and on that document on the far left, you'll see line number. And so for our market value referendum, it starts with that. You'll see in parentheses, five thousand and one for a line number on the far left, on that top line, where it's just underneath subtotals by levy category.
Okay.
So you see that number of five thousand and one.
Yeah.
That is your reference line number. So if you go back up into the document to line number five thousand and one, it will show you how it came up with that computation for the general RMV voter jobs, the exempt amount for nineteen pay twenty of sixteen million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. So you can do that with any of those particular levy items. You'll see a lot of adjustments in here.
That's amazing.
Because there's three things that's happening in any levy. We're estimating what our next year's enrollment's going to be. We're estimating what revenue that's going to generate. But what this is also doing from an MDE perspective is we're looking back to our current year that we're in right now. And if we have better information, we've provided that to MDE, and they have made a corresponding levy adjustment plus or minus. And then they look back to fiscal year 18, because that's a final levy, and they will make the final levy adjustments for that year. So you've got three levy cycles actually in play in one levy.
So for market value, that's just the property wealth of District 273?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, this is great. Thank you for sharing this with us.
Sure. All right, any other questions?
I'm going to get a really quick comment. John's done a great job coming in. Margo had really tough shoes to fill. And clearly, John's going with a process of more transparency than less in some of these documents. So I would ask that if you have any questions additionally to ask John or ask members of the finance committee, because these are the processes we've gone through for a long time, and they're really diligent. And I feel really confident in the way that group's being managed. So thank you, John.
Thank you.
Yeah, and there was no disrespect meant. It was just great to see an additional document in our board book.
There's thirty-five extra pages.
So thank you, thank you. Really appreciate it.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor of approving the 2019 pay 2020 property tax levy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next, can I get a motion to approve bringing the strategic plan draft to the community for feedback? John, are you?
So for the last 16 months, the school board has spent a lot of great time and discussion talking about the mission statement, the core values of the district, the vision of the district, and setting priority strategies. And what's exciting for me is that it's now an opportunity to take it out to the community to get feedback. So we have a series of meetings that are set up at our elementary, middle, and high schools as well as some open meetings that are open to the public who can attend. These meetings will be facilitated by Strategic Plan Facilitator, Myria Hansen, and we'll be collecting information and collecting responses from those participants of those meetings. So it's here for your approval. I know all of you have been at the meetings, so probably could add to this. So with that, that's the background.
I just had a question, and actually, hopefully, between John and Lenny and Erica, you guys can kind of help guide us. I know that this came before PLC on Monday, or Tuesday last week, and there was some feedback. Based on the feedback that you got, was there, did you feel that the document is still ready to go as is? Was there anything that you felt needed clarification? Or I know that when we talked about this as a group, we talked about if there is clarification needed, that as we were going through getting the input, all of that clarification would come back to the board then, and we'd say, okay, in total, we heard many times that we need to clarify A, B, and C. But I was just wondering if you guys had a gut check as to if there was any work needed before we got into the bulk of the sessions?
I think that's a great question. I don't feel any of the feedback was related to people not understanding what they were looking at and that we needed to clarify anything for people to give us better feedback. I think we got, I think we got feedback, but I don't know, Lenny or John, did you feel that there was?
Yeah, so I would say that we've gotten some, what I would call preliminary feedback from two different groups. I think that it would be appropriate to roll it out to the remaining groups, yes. And then, you know, compare the feedback. If we see a consistent trend, then that'll tell us.
Right, I just. Just wanted to make sure that if you guys thought there was any tweaking, since I know those two were right up front and we had a little gap, if there was anything that you guys thought needed something before.
I think the plan, as it is written, elicits feedback, so I think that's good instead of not getting any feedback at all. So I think there is substance here for people to sink their teeth into and give opportunities for thought.
So I will say, there actually is one bit of information, which is, I think that the introduction needs to state that this is more of a strategic direction as opposed, because people are saying, oh, a strategic plan should have A, B, and C. And we know what steps we're still waiting for. And so it's probably good to have a different introduction that just says, here's the direction. Here are the things that are going to add post-feedback. So that would be a change, but it's mostly in the way Myria presents it.
But it's a good question. I'll put more thought into it. And off the top of my head, I can't think of anything, but I'll put more thought into it.
But, you know, people said, well, where's the implementation plan? Right, so that's.
Clearly, we don't have that yet.
Right, so to the extent that that's a criticism of the plan, then that's actually just an update to the intro.
Exactly. It was more for the clarification. And so your comment, Lenny, is perfect. You know, we just need to explain the status of the plan, and so we'll tweak those little things. But it was looking for those tweaks so that as we go out to the community, it's fruitful, the feedback that we're getting.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving, bringing the plan out or draft plan out to the community, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We are on to, information is already in board book. Are there any committee announcements? So does teaching and learning have a committee announcement? I'm not saying that does.
No, no, we haven't met.
Okay. And then I think that, at the work session, we touched briefly on the finance committee having met with the city to talk about the comprehensive plan and whether it made sense for the school district to weigh in. And I think in general, the perception was not to be weighing in, but to keep open the lines of communication so that as the comprehensive plan moves forward, we need to be kept apprised if there are any changes in expected enrollment. Is that?
How did our community members on your committee, were they of similar opinion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I have one announcement. Just want to remind the public that we will have a world's best workforce hearing at the regular meeting of the school board on October 14th.
All right, we've completed the agenda. Are there any objections to adjourning? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.